The one final, the final thing.
Yep.
Everything going well for you, Sean?
Yeah.
Good.
You're busy with the winds and the storm?
Yeah, I wasn't because of my knee, so I've been on my knee, but I'm filling in as a superintendent. So kind of just helping out in the office and stuff. But yeah, our guys, they got, we sent two crews up north to Snohomish PD and then left us with a handful of guys here. But the guys at home, they were working around the clock too because there's still stuff happening.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I was surprised driving back and forth to work, seeing how many trees and big limbs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got three, we'll get started, but.
I think Tom, I see him pulling.
Oh, is he?
Yeah.
How you doing, Al?
Hey, I'm doing great.
Welcome.
Hey, I'm just concerned since.
We're happy you're here, Al.
Well, I wouldn't expect anything else.
There you go. Tom just pulled in, so we'll give him a few minutes.
Whose lights are still on?
Wow. Look, shoot, you're not shorts or anything, you know.
That crazy. No Hawaiian shirts, no pina coladas with me? How's it going?
Good, carry on.
Good. Tired, busy.
Okay, we'll go with fear. Soon as you're ready, Tom, we'll get started. It's five thirty-three.
Yeah, sounds good. I am ready.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session this evening. So clerk, if you could please start the recordings. All right, and today is Wednesday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And I would like to call this evening's work session to order. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox.
Absent.
Councilmember Casper.
Dialed in.
He's video where he's.
Sorry, I was having some sound issues. I'm here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Serviny.
Present.
Mayor Thornton.
Present, thank you. So this evening, we have a presentation by Jeff Swanson. It's to present to the council the legislative agenda for twenty twenty-three. And so we'll turn it over to Jeff, and you want us to ask questions as you go through, Jeff? Wait till the end, or?
Is this on? Yes. You can ask questions as we go through, as we come up, so I'll ask, ask if you can watch and see if Casey raises his hand or something and needs our attention. So, good evening, council. It's good to be with you. We're here to talk about our twenty twenty-three legislative agenda. And each year, about this time of year, we prepare the agenda for the upcoming legislative session, primarily highlighting capital projects that we're seeking grants and appropriations for, but also a few policy asks as well. And so with that, why don't we pull up the legislative agenda? And then we'll, we'll go through this and we'll go through the supporting documents. So a few years ago.
Excuse me, Jeff. Is everybody here, Jeff, okay? Okay.
So back in twenty nineteen, the state legislature appropriated one point five million for design and pre-construction work on the East Fourth Street Breezy Creek project. And we have been seeking funds for the construction phase, the, the design and most permitting phase is complete. And we've also, we've been awarded a rural surface transportation block grant, just over a million dollars, so that's for construction funding. So the gap we're looking to fund is about twelve million dollars. And so that's, we'll continue to press for some kind of earmark for twelve million for that project.
Obviously, there's been a rise in cost inflation, all that stuff. Originally, wasn't it somewhere around ten million for the total project?
Yeah.
And it's just gone up three million over a couple of years.
Yes, yeah, the twelve reflects the engineers or city engineers' latest estimate of the gap in funding.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's one of the things we do every year is sort of fresh those numbers up. Because, you know, they, they go bad a week after you come up with a number.
For sure.
Yeah.
And how is that one looking, Jeff? Because I remember Senator Rivers, in one of our meetings, said, yeah, that's probably not gonna happen for a while. So is that something that we're lobbying for? And how are we doing that?
Yeah, so it really depends on if the state is going to do a transportation package. They did the packages last session that did not involve any kind of bonding. And so it, but it only funded a few projects statewide, some mega projects statewide. And so we anticipate, there's just lots of other projects that need to get done, both in southwest Washington and throughout the state. We anticipate there's gonna be some desire to put a package together, and those typically happen in these longer sessions when they do a budget. So we have a better shot, I think, of getting something through in this next session.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's our, our number one ask. That's been our number one ask. That project is one we would consider shovel-ready. So as soon as we've got the financing to do construction, we can proceed with that. We had two other capital requests. We kind of keep these things on just to let legislators know that we appreciate the work they did in prior sessions that benefited the city. So kind of a thank you for the City Hall consolidation project and the tenant improvements here. That was one point two four million earmarked that we received in twenty twenty-one, and five hundred and fifteen thousand for the community center, commercial kitchen, and some HVAC parking lot repairs and some other miscellaneous things on that building. So while we say thank you for that stuff, and then the other projects that we're trying to tee up, I would say behind East Fourth, Breezy Creek, probably the next most pressing transportation project is Northwest Pacific Highway. From just outside of downtown here, all the way to the city limits. With development going on in that corridor, with that rural two-lane road configuration, it's been there a long time. Plus, it's gotten beaten up from over a decade of rerouting over-dimensional trucks because of the East Fork I-five bridge. So we're looking for that first batch of funding that would fund the design work on that project.
How are you gonna get that one through? I mean, because we did this with the Breezy Creek was fish and such like that, how do you propose to go after that one?
Well, I think our story there has a lot to do with the rerouting trucks off of the state system onto our local system, on our local streets, without any kind of compensation to the city.
Right.
All right, that's, that's a pretty compelling narrative around that project. So last session or session before, we met with Paul Harris, who is, he's on the House side, Republican side of the, of the aisle in the House. He's in leadership. I want to say he was the whip. And so he, he was compelled by the narrative around that project. You know, obviously, the state hasn't taken care of its transportation system and has let some of its bridges go. And when that places an undue burden on local communities, they recognize they need to step up and do something. So both of these projects, probably more so, East Fourth Breezy Creek would be primed for a Transportation Improvement Board grant opportunity as well, TIB program. So that's another avenue to potentially fund that because it is shovel-ready. This one, Pacific Highway, you know, you got probably a twenty-five million dollar project in today's dollars. A few years ago, it might, might have been more like twenty.
Right.
And you're always looking for about ten to fifteen percent of that cost is pre-construction. So that's your environmental work and your design and permitting work is typically ten to fifteen percent. So we'd be looking for roughly two and a half to three and a half, four million dollars initially. It'll take us a couple of years to get through that process, to get it shovel-ready.
Thank you, Jeff.
So we'll talk about the CCTA and the AWC agendas here momentarily. But we, in our statements, we typically just say, yep, us too, we support these. We support our cities association, things they're asking for. And we support the regional Clark County Transportation Alliance policy statement. We'll go through those. So a couple of other asks that are carryovers, broadband access. This is more of a Porter Ridgefield project because they're the ones who own and have constructed the dark fiber loop. And so always looking for additional investments in broadband for our region to bring that service to our communities and enhance that service. And then the IT three Discovery Center, and I think some of you who were on council last year and the year before might have even gone through a tour, gone over and met with some folks from Porter Ridgefield to see what they were working on there. But this is a, it's a really a workforce development project, so there's a nexus there with Clark College and training in some of our K-12 institutions in the region as well, Ridgefield Schools, La Center Schools, and providing workforce training opportunities in traded sector, in industry manufacturing, traded sector. So any questions about this document? This is kind of our, our cover page, right? So let's go ahead then and go to the, why don't we do the AWC document, we'll go there first. So AWC is city legislative priorities. Most of these concern fixes to the police reform. And the Blake decision, so we can scroll down just a little bit. So Blake decision is around controlled substances and involves criminal law. I don't happen to be super familiar with the policy area here. I think Chief Richardson probably knows it well, and so if you have questions, he may be able to respond to, you know, what's Blake and what's going on there. Scroll down a little bit more. So pursuits, this has, this is a big deal with the, with the police reform. Our officers would have to get approval from a supervisor to engage in a pursuit. And if you happen to be a sergeant that's on duty, that's trying to engage in pursuit, you have to get approval from your supervisor. So that's why you hear the stories about, you know, somebody leaving, the officer's right there and unable to pursue because of the way that that law has been written, was written and has been interpreted. Again, something that chief could speak to, but an area where it sounds like there is a lot of impetus to do some fixing. And of course, these are AWC's priorities, so they swing a pretty big stick up in Olympia. Let's go back up the document if we can.
It's nice to see those on there, actually.
Yeah, so Public Works Assistance Account, also known as Public Works Trust Fund. This is one, I believe the city has actually drawn on this program in the past to fund wastewater treatment plant improvements and some other public works projects. This is one that has been repeatedly swept. The funds have been swept out over last several sessions into the general fund. Now, I think the last time around, they left a little bit, but this is a fund that, it's a revolving loan fund. And so jurisdictions all over the state, and it's not just cities, but counties, special districts like sewer districts and water districts, they can use this account to draw low-interest loans for some of their capital projects. So low-interest, long-term loans. And the repayments that those agencies make on their loans are supposed to fund new loans. So when they sweep that fund balance out into the general fund, it impedes the program's ability to make new loans. So this is something that AWC and the Association of Counties, Public Works Board, and some other partners in Department of Commerce have advocated for, for a number of years, to leave the Public Works Assistance Account alone, right? Don't sweep it. Just a couple of other items on there. Housing availability and affordability. Each session this comes up, Senate and House committees are talking about ways to address affordability and availability, housing. And the next one, behavioral health resources, is another substitution. So AWC is continuing to lean on our legislatures to do something about those issues, come up with solutions that help at the local level. Any questions about AWC's priorities? Okay, so let's go to the CCTA statement. So just a note about CCTA. Clark County Transportation Alliance is a group that's convened by Identity Clark County and the Columbia River Economic Development Council each year. And they work with RTC and put together a list of transportation projects in the region. You can see them on the map there that need some capitalization. And so if we scroll down, this, this group includes businesses, it includes cities. Usually representation from Clark County that participates in this process. So it's all the local governments plus business associations in some specific businesses. So the, the big one on here has always been the I-five bridge replacement. For the last however long they've been doing this, they've been really wanting the legislature to act to do something about the bridge condition and the congestion that it causes in the region. And so that's, that's the big one. If we scroll down a little bit more, so action number two. This has become more of a focus in recent years. RTC has done some study work on state of good repair, working with Washtot. And so really looking at safety and mobility of the system and different improvements that are needed there. And so if you think about like down by Patton Parkway, between SR five hundred and Patton Parkway on I-two oh five, the need for an auxiliary lane there. And you've probably noticed that over the years, they've done things that don't involve putting pavement down, but, you know, change where a line is painted on the road to try to make it flow better. Those are some of the state of good repair things that they've worked on. It's like, well, if we, you know, do that, or, you know, taking out the Falk Road and Stapleton intersections on five hundred to reduce rear-end crashes, you know, what's the, what's a cheap fix that will buy us more time with the facility before we have to do the forty or fifty million dollar, you know, interchange? Building interchange. So that's been a, a big emphasis over the last couple of cycles where we've done these CCTA statements. And we'll scroll back up. So job and employer-enabling improvements, so looking at Discovery Corridor, which is Interstate five from about hundred and, well, really almost down to Salmon Creek interchange area, all the way up to the county line is what's considered the Discovery Corridor. This is a Brent and Granting term, so if you know Brent, who's been the CEO of Porter Ridgefield, retired recently. He coined that term a number of years ago, calling this area the Discovery Corridor for its job creation potential, the land, the transportation access, and other utilities access. So the, the sewer improvements in Ridgefield were part of that Discovery Corridor program, right? You need transportation, you need water, you need sewer to create economic development opportunities and create development-ready land. And so a lot of those projects came from that, that emphasis. So Discovery Corridor, Section thirty is a piece of property down by, if you know where Costco is, on one hundred and ninety-second in Vancouver, in Vancouver, Camas. Section thirty is out there. It's a large piece of developable property. The Waschugle Town Center, the Port of Camas, Waschugle, Port of Vancouver are both major employment areas. So looking at how we address the transportation needs to serve those areas and enhance job creation. So then the next set, if we go down a little bit more, we're looking at some specific projects. So we have the West Camas Slough Bridge, the two oh five, SR five hundred, Patton Parkway. So now, instead of just paint, we're looking for funds to do an auxiliary lane. SR five hundred, fourth plane, SR five oh three. So that's kind of a hotspot. If you ever get caught down there by Golden Corral, where all those roads kind of come together, SR five hundred ends in a, at a traffic signal and fourth plane runs through there and five oh three cuts north towards Battleground. So that's another, another big one. Waschugle Town Center, transportation access improvement. For them, that's really some grade separation with the railroad. They have a couple of areas where they need better access under the railroad. And we can go on the next page. SR five hundred Everett Street Corridor, this is if you've been down to Camas lately, to Lackamas Lake on the southeast end of the lake is the Lake Road Roundabout that was completed fairly recently. And basically going north from there on the state route to the city limits. Camas is looking for some funding to do eventually construction, but for starters, planning, right away acquisition. One seventy-ninth Street from Northeast fifteenth, Northeast fiftieth. It's right on the, at the one hundred and seventy-ninth interchange, going east, basically out to fiftieth, that whole corridor, a couple of roundabouts, and knocking down some of the thrill hills that are there, right? The site, site distance limitations, fixing those.
I noticed the one thing missing in there, Jeff, that when I was looking over this, I, I didn't see any improvement at one hundred and seventy-nine, the redo.
Yeah.
They've been talking about that for the last couple of years.
Well, so that one is, technically, it's funded. Connecting Washington in twenty fifteen, there was, I'd want to say, fifty million dollars that was put in the budget for that project. So reconstruction of that interchange, I-five Mill Plains, another one. And I think they're both slated for construction in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five time period.
Oh, so it is.
What those monies are for.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, those were in that twenty fifteen project list that would have the gas tax increase and so.
Yeah, no, I, I don't remember, sorry.
It's backaways, right? And actually, Camas Slough Bridge, which is on this list, it was also funded from that package. But there were issue, there are issues between two oh five and one sixty-fourth on that same corridor. And so there was a grand bargain between Camas, Waschugle, the Port of Camas, Waschugle, and Vancouver, and Washtot to take the Slough Bridge out and use that money to fix the stretch of SR fourteen between two oh five and one sixty-fourth. And they're just now starting construction on that project and be adding some auxiliary lanes there. Another congestion hotspot in the region. So there's always a little bit of movement around of some of the projects and some of the monies after the, the bills are passed. Okay, so F and G really are two related projects. They're at one seventy-ninth, addressing in concert with the I-one seventy-ninth interchange reconstruction. All the connecting infrastructure on either side of that need to be upgraded and improved. And those are not state system projects, those are local roads. So Northwest Thirty-second Avenue Industrial Corridor, it's a city of Vancouver project. Another one is Eighteenth Street. You've been out on Eighteenth Street. They improved it from two oh five out to about one hundred and thirty-eighth Avenue. And so the next phase of that is extending those improvements out to one ninety-second. Eaton Boulevard, Battleground. So Eaton is still kind of in rural configuration, looking to urbanize that road. Battleground's also looking for downtown revitalization and circulation study for some funding there. And then the next project is the one that's near and dear to our hearts, which is East Fourth Street widening, Breezy Creek Culvert replacement removal. Next one is a new, it's, it's building basically the west side of the five oh two interchange. Working on adding some ramps and access for the southeast part of Ridgefield to access two oh five and five oh two. Five oh one Pioneer between fifty-six and fifty-first, improving that roadway to more of an urbanized standard. And then Transit is, this is extending fourth plane BRT and connecting Mill Plain, fourth plain lines at the East Mill Plain Transit Center. Some work on the BRT projects. So these other graphics point to some traffic bottlenecks in the region. So a lot of these projects align. So a lot of these projects align with addressing those bottlenecks, trying to improve the congestion, safety, mobility issues for the regional system. And so our practice has been that we endorse this. We endorse our legislative agenda, really, and we include this. And so by virtue of doing that, we endorse this statement. And there's a place on that first page, you'll see it's blank on one side. And that's where all these different agencies and businesses fix their logos. So the ask tonight, when we're in a regular meeting, will be to endorse this legislative agenda and by virtue of that, this C C T A statement. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't really have any questions. Sure. I'd like to see an extra lane or two. Start on going northbound on I five. That'd be nice. I don't know how long you guys have been out here, but traffic was never as bad as it is now. It's terrible.
Yeah.
You're down to sixty miles an hour in a seven.
I was thinking about that. Well, I got caught in a little bit of congestion coming north this evening for this meeting. And then even coming into La Center and going east from the La Center Junction. There's a lot more taillights going eastward than there were, you know, three, four years ago.
Yeah. And then you had the thirty five mile an hours on it. It just becomes clustered.
Yeah.
Instantly. Yeah. And everybody slamming on the brakes. Yeah, it's. Have you ever been a part of anybody not endorsing it for any reason?
There have always been concerns raised about the I five bridge replacement project. Always. I think they're on every council in the region, with the exception of maybe Vancouver right now, but previously Bill Turley, who was a council member in Vancouver, had concerns about that project. So there's always been a little bit of dissent and consternation over how that project is envisioned. And so, yeah. The way to think about it though, I mean, these are regional partnerships. And this is kind of the opportunity for us to put our stuff in there. They put their stuff in. And we all just kind of tell the legislature, pay attention to us down here in southwest Washington and let us claw back some of the money that we send you so that we can fix our issues here. And there are other avenues or venues to address concerns about a specific project.
Absolutely. I was curious.
Yeah. Other questions? Casey, you have questions?
No. Well done.
Okay. All right. Well, we can talk about whatever you want to talk about.
Okay. No, thank you very much, Jeff. And if, if there are no questions or any discussion amongst the council members, then I think we can go ahead and close the work session. And of course, we can't take any action in the work session this evening, but it is on the council agenda in our regular city council meeting. And you'll be presenting for a resolution or just a.
Just a, just a vote. Yeah. We'll just be looking for a motion in the regular meeting to endorse. And that's really all you need to do.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Well, thank you very much, Jeff. Well done. Appreciate it. Got a work cut off for us to get the, you know, the asks that we do have. It's, uh, it's quite your deal, but I'm looking forward to working with you on that.
You know, when you look at that list and you look at what some of the other jurisdictions are asking for, and this is really where we've done well, the city is, you know, everyone, hey, I need fifty million for this, seventy five million for that, you know, billion dollars for the I five bridge replacement. And we're going, hey, can you just throw us ten, fifteen million bucks? Budget dust.
Yeah.
And throw us a little budget dust. And, and that seems to play pretty well with them. They, they do like to help out the smaller cities and towns, the rural communities. And, and we've always had a good story to tell about our projects. You know, East Fork Breezy Creek is a, is a good project because it improves a lot of safety, mobility issues. It's safe routes to schools and fish. Kids, fish, traffic safety. Three great things. All right. All right. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
So we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session. We'll begin our city council meeting at six thirty. And appreciate your presentation and thank you, Council. Okay, Council, if everybody's ready. Casey's on?
Yeah, he is.
Yep, I'm here.
Would you please start the ring? Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty two, and I like to call today's today's city council meeting to order. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk may have the rule call.
Councilmember Fox.
President.
Councilmember Casper.
President.
Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you.
Everybody awake now?
Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council this evening, please step forward to the podium. If you'd give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Clerk, do we have anybody that wants to speak this evening?
Peter.
Good evening. Peter Rosenkranz, one two zero three East Pioneer Loop. I just wanted to give kind of an update what's going on around campus, around schools. My goal is to get our A S V officers up here sharing eventually, not just adults, because I think we're about kids. We need to get kids in front of this mic and see what goes on at events like this. So I have really kind of three or four areas. In case you didn't hear, we took four league championships in one week between football, volleyball, soccer, cross country. They all took league titles. Swing and. Those do amazing things for civic pride. The crosswalk in front of Orancho Viejo turns blue with all the people waving kids off to state. It's a pretty amazing event. Might want to turn the sidewalk blue instead of white. Just say, anyway. Maybe some pop prints. Anyway, swim team represented by two folks went off, went off to district and had a nice showing. Out of that, we ended up with volleyball, bringing home hardware with Athan State. Individual representations in like cross country, track, those events, swimming, they're hard. Team events going to state is incredible. And so, and the, the good news is our volleyball team is quite young. So I anticipate things next year as well. Levy, last time I talked to you, mostly it was about the levy. And we had two safeguards for taxpayers. One was the amount we could collect at two point six. And other was a rate of one point five. So last night at our board meeting, we passed a, passed the amount of two point six at the rate of a dollar thirty one. So let that sink in a little bit. We lowered taxes by only collecting two point six on our citizens instead of collecting one point five per thousand, we collect a dollar thirty one per thousand. That also speaks to the growth that's happening and property values going up. So anyway, I see that as really good news for our taxpayers. Another item, and I'll, I have forty five seconds. All right. Paula Leach and Melinda Masna were honored at Live Here, Learn Here Celebration at WSU Vancouver. Paula runs the Leos out of the Lions Club with Jim Neiman and the service they do around town, down on the bottoms, trash collection. Bean Easter egg hunt, all sorts of things the Leos do. So it was a great time honoring Paula. And then, of course, Melinda is like the ever present volunteer in town and in schools. Finally, I'm excited for the La Center tree lighting on the fourth. That's Sunday, right? I, for some reason, had it Friday in my head. It's all right, Sunday. We'll be there with the Lions serving hot chocolate. I also wanted to just kind of make everyone aware. Sorry, this is my last one. Kallas Tribe is holding their tree lighting on, no, November twenty third, so the night before Thanksgiving. And there's going to be pretty big announcements that night. So as many citizens that we can get out four thirty or five. I just, I, I didn't put a time because I wasn't sure, but I will call in.
Yeah, I was going to announce the same thing this evening, Pete, but five o'clock. But yeah, I agree. So I'm glad you mentioned that. Very good.
Just amazing. So thank you. Love, I love the center and I'm going to pull the line from Al. God bless America.
Thank you. Well done, Pete. Well done for you, your staff, and of course, all of your students and players. It's absolutely incredible. So it's really exciting and it's, put some center on the map, no doubt.
Al.
Al Villa, one pie two, West Fifteenth Street. Really didn't have anything to say, but thank the city clerk. Anyway, it's about the placement of the citizens' public comment. You know, it used to be a little further down on the agenda and people really liked it. And then when they moved it, they complained about it. Well, I figured I'd bring that up now and complain about it. You know, it's, it's too close. But since I'm up here, I'm going to take away all, all you guys' thunder and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And, you know, so, you know, I was the first one to say it. So if you moved it down further on the list, you know, you, you know, somebody else will benefit. But okay, God bless America.
Player well taken. Thank you, Al.
Dennis.
Good evening. Dennis Hill, thirteen sixteen, West Alder Place. I just want to say a few things about the twenty twenty three legislative priorities. I was fortunate enough several years ago to be involved in part of that process. One of the things I just want to bring up, and again, appreciate all that Jeff Swanson's been doing on that. But we have Jeff Swanson and Lloyd Halverson working on our behalf at the state level. And also this past weekend, weekend ago, two weeks ago now, had chances to meet with, with my son's father in law, Keith Gaynor, who is a representative in the state. And we talked about legislative agendas. And he's also on the Transportation Committee. And one of the things we talked about was safe routes to school, which has to do with our Northwest Pacific Highway, which is, as Jeff already indicated, is under disrepair or is in disrepair due to age and the large trucks that go through there daily. And so anyways, he suggested that we do as much work by, you know, with Jeff and Lloyd and whoever's going to be up there representing us to really hit that hard. He thinks that money might shake loose this year. The other thing is the Four Street Widening and Culvert Replacement. He said also, you know, that's a big thing with ecology. Ecology, that's kind of almost at the top of their list as far as getting things done. They're big on that. And he also suggests that we hit them hard because he thinks this may be, again, a year to break that twelve thousand, twelve million dollar loose to get that under control. Because one of the things I shared with Keith, and we all know that here, is the fact we have a safety issue on Four Street. Any kind of a major issue there with regards to car. We're not going to get emergency vehicles from one side of the city to the other. They're going to be completely blocked off unless they want to take forty five minute drive around the country and make that happen. So we think that we've got some great things to do there. So again, I want to thank Jeff and look forward to have Lloyd and himself do a good work for us there. And at the state legislature, again, happy Thanksgiving. And as I also repeat, God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chester.
Garage doors across the street.
Oh.
Because there was no parking, so wondering that's, that's what happened.
Chester along one two zero two W E Place, La Center. And actually I had a question for the police chief and he's not here. Please, okay, good. I'm a newbie here. I've been here for about a year. And a couple of days ago, I went to get my haircut and we were talking about the safety, et cetera, in the La Center area. And she told me that we have only one full time police officer. Is that correct? It's not correct. How many do we have? We have two. Okay. My question is about response time. Being handicapped, I can't go to my window if somebody's breaking into my house with my cane and start to hit him with the head. That ain't going to work. My question is, what's the average response time in the city of La Center? Number one. Number two, what is the difference between the response time at two o'clock in the afternoon compared to two o'clock in the morning? As we all know, two o'clock in the morning is usually when robberies, carjacking, whatever takes place. I'm guessing maybe the police chief can go ahead and clue me in. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief, did you catch that?
Yes, Mayor, I did.
Okay, so if you could please reach out and have a conversation. While I can ask you a few questions.
Yes, sir, I certainly will.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience this, this afternoon? You're not seeing anybody step up to the microphone. I'll move on.
Kimberly Albon.
Hold on a second. Kimberly. So yeah, at this time, if there's anyone that's calling in or calling in virtually, if you could, please give your comments to the council right now. Again, limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're calling in, remember to push star six on your telephone. So you're, we're sure to get your call. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Yes, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This is.
Kimberly, if you keep your comments to three minutes.
This is Kimberly Elbin. I've lived in La Center for over 30 years where my mother was born. I'm so sorry that I'm not in town, but I'm very thrilled that there are finally citizens participating at our local city council meetings. The letter that I'm gonna read is dated November 2nd. It'll be in your minutes that you're gonna be passing. It's from a citizen speaking and addressing to the speaker that spoke already. It's from a woman from the public comment. Happy almost anniversary, newer council members. Can you believe it's already been a year? I wanted to congratulate you for fighting a hard battle when most others, including myself, didn't have the guts to do. I have, or I know you have had a very steep learning curve and you've taken some heat in not immediately bringing the police back like you all wanted. But wanting to and doing it are two different things. You, you had some very strong attitudes to deal with. Knowing it or not, outsourcing the police had very, had been on the city's agenda for a long time. And with COVID, BLM and the defunding campaign across the nation, events just fell into the city's lap to make this happen. And now it's almost impossible to overturn. I know the city blames, it's all on the national outcry, but it was the city's council or the city's concept bullying and not being willing to work with departments that drove them away in the first place. They'd still be here if attitudes had been different. And I agree, I'll end that there. I believe that the mayor last week put on the record that the words to quote, "defund the police" were never used. However, it happened anyway. And, but I've noticed during my activism that the Democrats are out to weaken America and her families. And defunding was one way to do this. Another way would be to lock down us again, mask us up or call in a new disease. You do, this city council does know that this is a socialist state. I've spoken on this before. You represent the people who are, who are asleep with the propaganda spread by, or excuse me, the pandemic spread by the propaganda in fear to cause this socialism. And it's sneaking up on people and they're going to wake up. Socialism does not work. It eventually runs out of other people's hard-earned tax dollars. And socialism will not work here in our local government for sure. Our forefathers said, "Big government is a no-no." They wrote the constitution and we're gonna follow it. So I ask the public to continue to attend and listen to Lars Larson on the radio at 101.1 FM. He has a lot of good information every day from noon till four o'clock. And congratulations to the students working very hard as teams and individuals. All across America, we need to watch over our children. Please go to your school board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any call, other callers this evening? Okay, with that, that's the end of citizens' public comment. I will move on next to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. For a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Next is the mayor's report. I have just a few items I want to share with the council this evening. First of all, reminder that city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday, the 24th and 25th, and observance for the Thanksgiving holiday. I would also like to take this opportunity to wish the city council, the city staff and everybody a happy and joyous Thanksgiving. And I'm sure everybody's looking forward to some awesome meals come Thanksgiving. So I hope everybody enjoys it and have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving holiday. Just a reminder that our next city council meeting will be Wednesday, December 7th. Again, that's Wednesday, December 7th. I look forward to everybody coming out for the tree lighting on Sunday, December 4th. It will begin at 4:30. And if you have not been there before, it's really well worth your time. It's very well attended, a lot of activities, a lot of community members come out. And it's really quite, quite an evening. So I would encourage everybody to, that can attend, to please attend. And also at this time, I'd just like to thank Paul's work staff for getting the Christmas tree decorated. Sure, I'm anxious to get it turned on, but it's, I know they've been working off, they're getting it all put together. So appreciate that very much, Brian. Thank you. I would just like to echo with what Pete brought up a little bit earlier that ALMA will be having their tree lighting ceremony on the reservation. It's, there'll be a big tent set up. It'll be right by the Christmas tree. You can't miss it. And that ceremony will be starting at 5:00 PM. And as Pete said, there'll be some pretty, pretty neat announcements for the city of La Center, for the community. So if anybody has available, it's unfortunate, it's just the night before Thanksgiving. But if you can make it, that would be wonderful. It's the 23rd of November, the day before Thanksgiving. And then the only other thing, item I have this evening is I do not have any updates on contracting with, or police contract with Ridgefield. But I suspect I'll be getting more information on that shortly. So that's all I have this evening for the council. Any questions for me?
Do we have any meetings scheduled with the city of Ridgefield regarding the police contract?
Well, they're still working on getting the consultants put together, getting that work done. So we continually talk with them, but right now it's, now we're running into the holidays again. So everything gets slowed down to a snail's pace. Pretty frustrating, I know.
I, I talked to a couple of the officers patrolling our streets on Halloween, which was really nice to see. And they were excited. They're excited to work with the city and, and come in and help us out. There was no ill feelings or anything like that. So it was very encouraging.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we'll just have to, you know, go through the process. Processes in the public sector are very slow, tedious. And I'll be the first to admit can be very, very frustrating, but we'll, we'll work through it. I just appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. And ultimately, at the end of the day, I think we'll come up with a really good program. So that's all I have for the council this evening. Next, our council comments, Councilmember Fox.
Good evening. Happy to see everyone here. Thank you, Pete, for the update. It's so fun to hear about all the amazing teams as a 12-arc athlete, you know, alumnus from La Center. It's so fun to hear about all the kiddos. And I mean, it doesn't surprise me because I mean, we attract such great coaches and teachers that stick around year after year and just lots of kiddos that play lots of sports, not just one. And it's just so awesome to hear that, see that. I've donated to the educational fund. Love it. Plan to do more. Yeah, so super great to hear all that and the taxes. That's great. So thank you. Yeah, just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. And just for a funny to Al, I'm just gonna go ahead and say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Yeah, I was looking forward to a police update, but I guess, you know, we're still, we're kind of stalled there. So that's unfortunate. And just, there's still graffiti on the other side of TBS building. I mean, I think you already know, but I just saw it again. So I just want to bring it up. No biggie, but yeah, appreciate everything. Town looks great. But yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Center School District and the athletic program. That's a job well done. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Call from her Boyle.
I just got a couple shout-outs again. I, last meeting, I forgot to mention or just give a thank you to the elementary school staff and PTO. They did the creature crawl for all the students. I was there with my kids, like literally lines 40 minutes long wrapped around the building to get inside. And it was cool. It was cool to see that many people out there and all the kids were having fun. Like I said, the, the teachers and PTO did a great job with that. But also I just wanted to give, pass down a thank you to Officer Langley. I guess we had a citizen who had a guest at their house, locked the keys in the car. Got ahold of him and he was able to unlock their car, get the keys out. So they were able to make their way back to their, to their home. And I know that's something that's kind of small and simple, but I do feel fortunate that we do have that, at least some capabilities to help out our community. And other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody and good to see you.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobel.
I, I think everybody's kind of taking everything, put it out there. I, I'm just gonna echo pretty much everything everyone said. Happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And Councilmember Sirdani.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to extend my appreciation for everybody that's attending our meetings. And whether it's in person or by phone or Zoom or go-to meeting. It's great to have that citizen participation and feedback. I'd also like to remind all of us, Thanksgiving is a time to consider all that we should be grateful for and thankful for. And each and every one of our neighbors make a difference in this community. And I feel very fortunate and proud to have a listener address myself. Thankful to my husband that he dragged me down here from Olympia to get married and live here. So thank you for everything that each of you do for this community to make it what it is. And we should all count our blessings. Thanks.
Thank you. Well said. Okay, so we'll move on to staff reports. Our first staff report this evening will be the police staff report. And Chief Richardson will be presenting to the council.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. This is the council report for October of 2022. In October 2022, we had 11 incidents that were reported to the state. And this compares to nine incidents that we had October of 2021. Year-to-date total reported crimes in 2022 were 133 versus 132 reported in 2021. For crimes against persons, we had four assaults in October, three of which were domestic violence-related assaults. And one assault was non-DV related and that was an adult versus a juvenile. We had seven property crimes, including one burglary of a business. We don't know how he entered because the business was locked. We had a theft from an unlocked vehicle. We had one counterfeiting where somebody passed a fake $100 bill at the casino. We had an identity theft where somebody utilized somebody's social security number out of state. We had one domestic violence-related vandalism where somebody punched a hole, family member punched a hole in the, in the residence. And we had an auto theft that was reported in 2022, but actually occurred sometime between now and 2013. So was a vehicle that was stolen from a storage lot. And people didn't know it was stolen until they saw it in an auto trader for sale. So we took a report on that. We had five arrests in October, one for counterfeiting, one for DUI, driving under the influence, two simple assaults and one other offense. As far as call response, October of '22 versus October of 2021, we had a decrease in community initiated calls. They dropped 60 in 2022 versus 111 in 2021. And we also had a decrease in police initiated calls for service. We had 47 in 2022 versus 53 in 2021. We still have stocking stuffers to give away. If you come to City Hall, we'll give you a cub, two per family. And you could put them in your stockings and give them to your kids or relatives or somebody who lives in the area to help reduce auto thefts. Just so you know, I, I did look at our auto thefts and total, total auto thefts so far this year, including the one I just mentioned, we're at two and we were at about 20 last year. So I think some of this is just people are actually listening to the, to my comments, hopefully, and everybody else's, to lock your cars, don't leave your keys in your car, that kind of thing. And so that, that really helps reduce auto thefts in our community. However, they're still up statewide and it's still a problem all over the, the county and individual cities. Just, I wanted to bring the community up to date on our use of force policy. The Attorney General issued a model policy for use of force back in about June or July of this year. And every agency by December 1st has to either adopt the policy, have your own policy, and then you have to make reference to why your policy is, is different and why you're not accepting the Attorney General's policy. Just wanted you to know that we did complete our use of force policy. It's, it's consistent with the Attorney General's policy, model policy. And so we gave notification before the deadline in December that, that we're currently using, adopting a policy that's similar to the Attorney General's policy versus a, there's an RCW that requires us to do that. In addition to that, for full transparency, I've put the entire department policy procedure manual on our website. So if anybody has any question about any policy that we have, from de-escalation to report writing to the use of force or tasers, it is all on, online. You're welcome to look at it. And we will update it probably quarterly. We, our policy manual in the station gets updated every, anytime there's a change. But for consistency and to make it pretty easy for the webmasters, we'll probably update it quarterly. And then finally, Halloween night, I just wanted to report that we had two patrol units on duty. Halloween night, we had four traffic stops, one of which somebody was cited for having a false registration. And we had one citizen's complaint that we handled regarding speeding vehicles on a roadway. And other than that, it was a pretty quiet, enjoyable Halloween night. I'm available for any questions if anybody has anything.
No, it was really nice to see the police patrol the neighborhoods. It's something I haven't seen in quite a while. And you know, just police presence on its own is a deterrent to crime or activities like that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I had a question. In your reports, I just noticed earlier this week that the Kalis Tribal Police had somebody, somebody pulled over on 4th Street. Are those incidents included with your report or do those?
It did. It depends what it is. If it's, if they're making it like a car stop in a city of La Center Street and it's merely them just stopping a car on their own, then that would be their statistic and we wouldn't capture that. But if they're backing up our officer on a call or they're responding to a call for service in our community, then that would be included in our totals. Does that, does that make, answer your question?
Yeah, and I, I was, I guess I, I can ask you about it later at a different time, but just curious of more or less how they would end up here. Not that I'm opposed to it, but it's, but just curious of how that works, I guess.
A, a lot of times there'll be something like, let's say they'll, we don't have a, an officer on duty. And let's say they, somebody broadcast a reckless driver or something like that. That call would get captured for us, but their station, their patrol unit would actually come in. They come down and they'll stop it or, and they'll handle emergency calls. So mostly what you see them doing is handling a calls for service that require a police response, just like this year for Ridgefield. Or they're backing up our, one of our officers on some type of call that's related. And they're either setting up a perimeter or they're, they're talking to a witness or those kinds of things. So there's all kinds of different reasons why they could be here doing that. But everything is coordinated through the CAD system and a radio system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for the chief this evening before we move on? Okay. So we'll move on to the next staff report, which is the legislative staff report. And Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting that this evening to the city council. And we did have a work session just prior to this meeting. And we did have a work session just prior to this meeting. We went into a pretty deep dive with that. So Jeff, if you could review that with us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, good evening. I won't go into as great a detail as we went into during the work session. But just for context, each year, the city adopts a legislative agenda that includes priority projects of our own that we're going to advocate for in Olympia for funding in the upcoming legislative session, as well as endorsing some regional projects and priorities. We include the Clark County Transportation Alliance Policy Statement, which includes one of our projects, the East Fourth Breezy Creek Capital Request, as well as the Association of Washington Cities' cities priorities. And so what we're looking for from council, of course, is any questions that you may have about this action and then a motion to approve the city's legislative agenda. So turn back to you for any any questions you have.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Mr. Swanson this evening? Discussion amongst council members?
That was pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
That's a good work session.
Yeah, good.
Mayor, I moved approved the 2023 City of La Center Legislative Agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2023 City of La Center Legislative Agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jeff. Great job. Appreciate all your hard work and all the work really begins. Okay.
Bring home the bacon.
Next is the Administrative Services Staff Report. And Maria will be presenting that to the city council this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Thornton and City Council. Tonight I bring you the November staff report. The October sales tax dispersment was sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty-six thousand four hundred twelve dollars, compared to seventy-four thousand eight ninety-nine in 2021. I attended trainings on tips for de-escalation and employee leave. And I also attended Grow Clark County, which was sponsored by CREDC. And as Mayor mentioned, our annual Christmas tree lighting will be on Sunday, the fourth at four thirty. Some activities include the tree lighting, a visit from Santa, free books from the library, cookies, hot chocolate, and a new activity this year called Paint the Plow. And we will also be hosting an open house and a ribbon cutting on Tuesday, December sixth, from three to five PM here at City Hall. And we will be recognizing our legislators who helped us receive our grant. And the public is invited and encouraged to attend that. Also, we do have, the Lions Club is sponsoring a coloring contest. And so those can be printed out online off the city's website. Or we also have some copies over there if you want to grab. There are not age specific. They can pick any color they want. And the prizes will be given out at the tree cutting or at the tree lighting. The city would like to nominate a local student for the Association of Washington City Scholarship. Applications can be picked up at the high school or through the city. And the deadline is Tuesday, January third. And if chosen by the state, our nominee could win a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. The city has appointed Dan Masterson to represent us on the Clark County Arts Council. Dan has experience in teaching art, particularly at Yosemite. And he previously served as a co-chair for the Board of Directors for an art event in California. And his art actually is featured now in the hallway if you want to take a look at it. And we will have more people featured before our ribbon cutting. Our gambling tax revenue came in slightly below last month at just over a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, but has helped steady for the last quarter. Are there any questions?
What's the time again on the ribbon cutting?
Four thirty.
Okay. Any other questions for Maria?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can the public have a question?
Sorry, we can't. This is just for the council. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to bring on Riley.
So next, we will move on to the 2023 proposed budget. And again, Maria and our senior staff, our senior staff accountant, Riley will be presenting that to the council.
Okay.
All right. Hear me all right? So we've got the proposed budget here. I don't think there's actually any changes from the last time I went through this with you guys. So I don't know if we want to go through page by page, just kind of look at the highlights. But it can look pretty similar. I guess we had notes, significant changes in 2023. That's about the only thing that we've added to this, all stuff that we've discussed so far. But property tax increase that we already passed, no ARPA next year, and lower construction estimates, but we're looking at about four point one million dollars in our general fund revenue. So we're going to have some decreases in our services that we're paying outside services for. And HR is one of the big one. And I see with accounting services, since we won't be having the audit next year or we'll be paying less for an audit next year. Salaries and benefits have been updated based on our employee analysis. Just did a big spreadsheet with all the employees on there and adding in their, you know, whatever increases they might have. Legislative Department, the big change in this one was that allocation of lobbying services. I think we did about fifty percent was the total. So that's just a change of money in this fund versus the Community Development Fund. That's what I always see a big jump on that one. Police Department, we are down from what our budget was in 2022. However, we still have the same staffing in there. The only difference on that salaries and benefits line is we've moved the hiring bonuses from services to salaries and benefits are more in line with what the actuals we've been paying on people are so far. And then we don't have that transfer out of a police vehicle. So that's another big driver of the decrease in the police department budget. Municipal Court Department, pretty small one, no real changes there, just a few line items in total. And our community development, since we're expecting a bit of a slowdown in the construction, we're going to have a bit less services as well. We're not going to have to pay a planner as much. Update our salaries and benefits based on that same schedule. And some of those legal services have been allocated to the Legislative Department. Public Works, all the guys have been excited to get a little bit more done next year. Not that they haven't been getting a lot done this year. But we're going to have a new Public Works Supervisor. And I think we've got a few more increases in some buckets. So they're hoping to, yeah, hit the ground running next year. No vehicles purchased either. And the Public Works Parks Department, that one is more or less staying the same, not much changes in that one. If we look at the combined summary here, as we've mentioned, we've got about a little less than a seven hundred thousand dollar projected deficit. But we're all really just waiting on that, the contract with the City of Ridgefield to see how that's all going to shake out. Nothing in the Reserve Fund, just getting some interest and dividends there. Don't think we're going to need to dip into that. Impact Fees Fund, as I mentioned last time, that we're not going to be getting any park impact fees directly to us because we've got the park impact fee credits issued for Riverside Park. So how that works, they build a park for us and instead of just collecting impact fees, they'll just be paying them to the developer. And we've got the capital projects list is featured at the end of this. But Brian's already gone over that in his presentations and he can explain those a lot better than I can. He has explained those a lot better than I am. Nothing in the Vehicle Equipment Fund, I don't think we're going to need to purchase any cars next year, but we're going to get some good tracking on what we will need to purchase cars in the future and how to fund that fund, how much we need to transfer on a yearly basis to make sure that we're not going to get any big surprises when a truck dies and we don't have enough money in there. The Sewer Operations Fund, no increases in our rates. We had more people moving in, so we're expecting to see a bit more revenue. And there's had the big increase in salaries and benefits. That's just based on some of the allocation of our employees. It's not like we're hiring anybody else in there. And the Super Capital Fund, Capital Project List is at the end. No major projects. We had this remembering this year, but just a few smaller ones for next year. And then sewer debt service, paying off that loan, I think that's done. And I think I had that in my last report, 2026, something like that. And then the Stormwater Fund, again, no rate increases, but more people. Here's to look at all the funds combined. I think this one may not have been in there last time, but it's really a whole lot of spreadsheet to try to get on one page. We do our best there. It's a little a little hard to read. But look at that about a little over eleven million dollars total in expenditures. And there's the capital. So any questions or comments or anything that further discussion on the budget before we go through the passing of that? Excited to not go through this budget anymore except for every day next year.
It's been thoroughly gone through, that's for sure. But I can't leave just one budget cycle without a question. So just real quick for clarity sake and just maybe to refresh my my old brain here. The planned action area, we've got a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand. And I know, Jeff, when we first brought this up all the way back in eighteen or nineteen, it was budgeted for about a half million. Can you refresh my memory of why we're not at the half million or we're at the two fifty? Because if I remember right, it was for each area. Timmins was two fifty and downtown was going to be for two fifty.
Yeah, that's correct. So it's going to be in that four to five hundred thousand dollar range total. But it's a multi-year process. So when we come back for the 2024 budget, we'll have the remainder of that. The budgeted amount would cover the work that takes place next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for either Maria or Riley this evening before we move on to the ordinance?
Nope, looks good.
Okay, very good. Great report. Thank you for all your hard work, Riley. Yeah, I'll just say this publicly, the work you're doing is amazing. This is so straightforward, so clear cut. It's it's really great to see the budget put together in a manner where it's easy to understand and very transparent and understandable. Great, great work. So with that, we can move on to the ordinance and Maria, if you would present that as well, please.
Yes, I want to echo what the mayor said. Thank you, Riley. I appreciate all your work on this. So tonight, we are meeting to conduct a public hearing on adopting the budget for 2023. So a little recap is that the budget was made available to the city council and public on October seventh. And then the proposed budget for the RCW was put on the city's website and sent to council on November first. Riley has pointed out some differences between the 2022 and 2023 budget. A couple of changes from the preliminary budget to the proposed budget. We're on the capital project side. So per council's authority, we've added five thousand dollars to the radar sign and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Fourth Street Grant Application Support. And we also moved the Pollock Storm Repair Project from transportation impact fees to regular capital as it was not TIP eligible. And then lastly, we removed the La Center Road Lighting Study as it will be completed this year. I want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee, which includes the mayor and council members Servini and Stroben and community members Jack Davis and Deanna Suter. Also, thanks to Riley and the department heads for their contribution to the budget process. The budget development process included two city council work sessions and one presentation during a council meeting to review the revenue estimates, the baseline and final expenses and the preliminary and the proposed budgets. In addition, the Budget Advisory Committee met four times. And then at the last meeting, we held a public hearing and the council approved the 2023 revenue sources from the proposed budget as well as the property tax levy. The overall budget is just over eleven million. That is primarily divided between operating funds and capital projects. The general fund budget is four point eight million, just shy of one million for the sewer operating funds and just over a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for the stormwater operating fund. For the capital projects, we have two point five million for the capital projects fund and then five hundred and eighty thousand from the impact fee fund. Just over three hundred and twenty thousand from the sewer capital fund totaling almost three point five million in capital projects. The proposed budget does call for the use of general fund reserves in the amount of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, as Riley mentioned. But of course, as you're aware, if we're able to get a contract for police services, that will be greatly reduced. We do not have any ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act funds budgeted for next year. The combined fund, beginning fund balances of the general fund and reserve fund to start the year will be approximately six point nine million dollars. And we will finish the year with six point three million dollars. The capital projects fund will start with a balance of five point two million and end the year with five point one million. Some highlights that are, we are using conservative growth assumptions and we are anticipating growth above our 2022 levels. This year, we will have issued an estimated twenty-five building permits for single-family homes and we are anticipating fifty-five next year. In addition, a one hundred forty-four unit multifamily project is in the process of being completed. And then as far as staffing goes, as Riley mentioned, we are adding one employee to the Public Works Department. We have proposed full staffing for the police department, as we have mentioned. There is no increase in monthly sewer or stormwater rates. The city will complete scheduled updates to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan and the General Sewer Plan in 2023. You'll also see in the staff report some targeted infrastructure improvements, including the design for a pedestrian path along Pacific Highway to provide students a safe route to walk or bike to school. And also, we will complete permitting and right-of-way acquisition for the East Fourth Street Breezy Creek culvert and road widening project. We also have the design of a citywide systemic horizontal curve warning signs and systemic roadway departure treatments for next year with construction happening the following year. And as Brian presented last month, we have two planned action areas, downtown and Timmin Landing, which will establish the community's vision and set the stage for development and redevelopment of the areas north and south of the East Fork. And lastly, we will renovate the community center kitchen and the parking lot. So if we can go to the exhibit, one, and you guys have the exhibit in front of you. And then one thing I haven't pointed out is our impact fees. So we will have school impact fees of just over two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and those are in and out, as is the sewer's latecomers agreement, which are both under that fiduciary activities line. And as Riley has mentioned, we do not have any vehicle purchases planned. And we also will be purchasing backup pumps next year for our wastewater treatment plan, which Brian had discussed that with you previously as well. So the staff recommendation would be that the city council approve ordinance 2022 dash thirteen, adopting your 2023 budget. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Maria or Riley? Any discussion amongst the council members before we open up the public hearing? Okay, so at seven twenty-two, I will open the public hearing. If there are any public comments from the audience, would you please step forward to the microphone right now? Give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Al?
Al, hello, one five two West Fifteenth Street. I think the first time I came up and spoke to y'all, like that was in March or so. I I I said one of the very important things for the council members to do is your due diligence on anything you do, especially, and this is, this is your big one, the budget for next year. You know, if there's any questions you have, or if you don't agree with it, you know, we still got two more meetings, and we've gone to that before. Not that we really want to do that, but, well, I guess I don't care. I'll be here. So due diligence, you know, if you don't like something in there, or if you like something, if you like everything, you know, vote accordingly. But hopefully you've done your due diligence. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance this evening that would like to make a public comment?
Will you give it to my son here? I have to take a phone call. If it doesn't work, you're going to have to call your dad from here.
Most older place, just quickly here regarding the gambling room. That's obviously a big item, big ticket item for us. Do we or have we received anything, and I guess I'll point that to Ms. Maria, from the card rooms, the two owners, with regards to any kind of a forecast that they have going into the next 12, 18 months? Do we get anything from them on that, or is this just our best guess without any input from them?
So normally, when we're creating the budget, we tell them what we're projecting, and they say yea or nay. I don't know, I believe I heard back from one card room, and I don't know that I heard back from another one, so that was our best estimate.
Okay, is that something we've asked for, though? I'm just curious, is that something going forward? Is that what you would say from them, some kind of a forecast to kind of give us an idea what they, because they're obviously have hands-on daily there and have an idea of what things are. We, wife and I, went to the Asian restaurant here at the New Phoenix here a couple weeks ago, enjoyed a meal. Their hotel, restaurant's not open, but they're still serving, but they seem very busy. Pretty full, too, which is, which we obviously like to see. And I just, I forgot to say this before, and I just wanted to give a shout out again. Appreciate Pete being here, representing the, our superintendent schools, and I appreciate the fact that we have him here almost every meeting, and in fact that he's sharing, he wants to broaden the base as far as his students as well. So again, great job to Riley, and you, Maria, too, and your staff on the budget.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience this evening? Okay. Any public comments from the people calling in? And if there are public comments, please remember to push star six on your phone, so we're sure to hear you, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, if you give us your name and address.
Kimberly Elbin, La Center. And so a few comments, I, again, I'm kind of used to seeing the public hearings on the written agenda, instead of just ordinances, resolutions, and then it says public hearings. It's a little bit misleading. It caught me again off guard. I would like to again see the public hearings being put over in a main item situation. In other words, maybe put it first, public hearings, comma, ordinances and resolutions. So I'll make that second request on that. So you're passing, I was, I'm here out of town again. Did I hear any resolutions or any monies going to funding our own police department? I'd like an answer.
Yeah, I think our Police Department budget is 1.7 million, somewhere around there.
And so nothing's gone up to, hope to get maybe two or three more officers? Nothing's being planned during this, you know, winter and time? I'd like to see that put in, so I hope you're not passing anything. I think I heard the gentleman say that we've got a couple more weeks, so let's make sure we put funding in for extra police officers. That's number one, as far as I can hear, on La Center citizens' concerns. So a lot of this is, this is winter coming, it's a recession, and I don't know about La Center, but I know that Oregon has well over almost a billion dollars they have to give back to the citizens. So the agenda is to weaken America and use all of our monies now. And here winter's coming, people are going to be freezing to death, and they're going to be starving. You know, I can't prove that because it hasn't happened yet, but it is coming. So I would suggest watching a little bit of spending and make sure you get some funds in there for our Police Department. And they must be constitutional police, and they do not have to comply to anything the government has to say as our government here locally in Clark County, in La Center, in Vancouver, and around the United States of America has been compromised. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers this evening, clerk?
No.
Okay. Any, did anybody write any comment or something to be read in?
No.
Okay, so with that, at 7:29, I will close the public hearing, open it back up to the City Council for any other discussions amongst ourselves, or if you have any questions for either Maria or Riley.
I wanted to address something here. Al came up and made a good point, you know, do your due diligence. As a person that's been on this and done this quite a few times the last five or whatever so years, most of us up here do our due diligence. I'm a person that critiques and really dives deep into the budget, as most people in the town know. Being a part of the Budget Committee has helped tremendously to see where money is going and where it's been appropriated. And police are, there is a budget in there for police, whether it's used for our own or the contracting, it is there. So I do have to say the budget process was an eye-opening experience, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you for all your hard work. Have you guys already found somebody to take that new hire position?
We have not advertised because it hasn't been approved yet.
Oh, right, that makes sense. And this is going to help take some off your plate, Brian, right? And just let them kind of like, is that what I'm guessing? Just kind of help share those, so you're not having to like take care of it.
Yeah, so that would take the direct supervisory sort of daily duties of all the sort of on-the-ground public work screws off of my plate and onto this new position's plate. That's correct.
Thanks, good, cool.
And there are working supervisors as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions or discussion with the council, the ordinance is there on the screen. If I could get a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2022-13, adopting the budget for the City of La Center for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and a policy with regard to fund transfers.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 2022-13, adopting the budget for the City of La Center for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and a policy with regard to fund transfers. This is a ordinance, so if I can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
For the first time in five years, yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Being on the committee is eye-opening, isn't it?
Ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, Council, and again, thank you, staff, and your hard work in putting this together, and again, a job very well done.
Excellent job, you guys.
So that concludes our meeting for this evening. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this evening's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again, Council.
Thanks, everyone.
Everybody. Thanks for being here.